This time, we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Durrell.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
President Fannerstall.
Here.
Trustee Walshlager.
Here.
Trustee Ledkay.
Here.
And Trustee Haas.
At this time, if you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Trustee Myers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is our republic, our states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, at this time, if anybody has comments, public comments for items that are not on the agenda, you can come to the podium at this time. Seeing as there are no public comments tonight, we will move to our first item, which is a presentation to Tom Brass for his service on the Business Improvement District Board. Mr. Brass, on behalf of the village and the village board, we got you a plaque. Tom Brass, an appreciation of five years of service to the Business Improvement District as bid president presented from the village of Heartland 2019. That's five years of service, which saw the Business Improvement District go through a lot, like the Riverwalk, not only other things like the Bark River Cleanup, and other things that happened, but it is greatly appreciated from the village of Heartland for your dedicated service to the community. Thank you, and to the Business Improvement District, if you want that. I can't walk down and shake his hand, because I can't leave the seat. Sorry about that. I would've walked down there, but otherwise, I can't leave the seat.
Tom, you gotta get a photo now. You gotta do like the sideways shake.
How do we get the whole board in here?
Just hide me, you're standing over here.
The floor is yours.
That microphone will pick up for YouTube. No, you don't, we all know.
It's been an honor. The bid's been around for, what, 13, or going on 14 years. Like you said, there's been a lot of changes, but they've all been good. And we got a new board coming in, we've got a future made for a new board. What I'm really proud of is the cooperation we've had between the Business Improvement District and the trustees and the village board over the years. And what I'm really happy about is, over these last, especially the last five years, there was a point with the bid where it was questionable whether it was gonna stick around. There was people that were concerned, and we turned it around, and I can honestly say the vast majority of the constituents who are members of the bid, I think, are behind it. And a lot of it is because of the facade improvement program, which thank God for the $20,000 we get from the village to match our 20, and the budget you give us, which I'm proud also to say that we started out with a budget of $70,000 in 2006, and our budget this year is at 74.8. So, almost, what is that, 16 years, and we've worked with it, but that 20,000 facade improvement really helps out. And it can only get better, and I appreciate the time I had to serve with it. Look, still gonna be on the board, but I'm gonna be quiet. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. All right. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes of the December 9, 2019 meeting. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments. This is in the amount of $425,653.12.
I make... Go ahead.
I'm going to approve the vouchers, in the amount of $425,653.12.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers.
Question?
Yep.
Chief, I have a question. The county, when we have somebody that we put into the county for housing, and the county's got, are they charging us for that? And then, do we have a chance to put that, those charges on the fine or something, or is that just something we wash, we just throw away?
No, it's something that we end up paying, and that is, we can't pass that back on to that individual, because they did their time for the fine in the county jail. There's no more assessment. So, that happens with any municipal violation. So, like, if we write a citation for disorderly conduct, speeding, anything that doesn't get paid, a warrant will ultimately go out. That individual's arrested on the warrant. If they cannot pay the fine, they go into the county jail for whatever the amount of time is designated on the warrant. Usually, it's a handful of days or so, and then the county bills each municipality for any of those municipal holds by the day. It's roughly $17 a day, I believe.
And there's no way for us to...
No, so it's kind of a double-edged sword, where you go from a fine to now paying for that individual's violation.
Because with the fine, then the county, or the board, or the court gets a portion of that, and the state gets a portion of that, and we get a little piece of that.
Correct. So, we lose all of that.
So, we shouldn't throw, we shouldn't arrest them?
Well, if they're not paying, there's very limited options. On small stuff, like speeding and that, I think they send for collections more often than not, but anything with no license, disorderly conduct, if it's tied to like a criminal statute, then they'll look at issuing a warrant and trying to bring those individuals to justice.
Any others on the vouchers? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of actions related to licenses and permits. We have bartenders' operators' licenses that expire June 30, 2020. This is for Joseph Hornke and Michelle Straub. If I didn't pronounce those properly, I apologize.
I make the motion to approve the two licenses read.
A second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve those licenses. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is a consideration of a motion to adopt Resolution 1230, 2019-01, Resolution Approving Municipal Court Budget. It's been moved and seconded to approve the court budget. If anybody wants anything added in, and how that is, basically, they just give us their budget that was sent to everyone, but it's the budget for where our people go.
Mr. President?
Absolutely.
On that budget, if you notice, there's a, the 2020 budget, there's a new line item that's designated. The court is actually gonna be moving. The city of Oconomok is building a new police department, and in that move, they're also moving the Lake Country Municipal Court. There's 20-some municipalities that participate in a municipal court. It's been funded through the citations, so no municipality's been paying for that court. With that transfer, it looks like the court budget almost doubled, but that's not a true picture of what's going on. We had an account set up for many years for when this day would come, where that court would either go off on its own, or have to move with the police department. And in this case, the most cost-effective option was to move along with the police department with some shared space. And for that move, they've designated this $300,000 fund that has been saved over the years for this specific reason for the move. We don't anticipate spending that much money with our move, but there will be new office furniture, supplies, things of that nature that we will be purchasing as an operations committee with the Lake Country Court. But anything that's not purchased, will go right back into the reserve fund. We just wanted to add it into the budget, so we could get what we needed for the new facility, and then get those funds back over to reserve fund, because from time to time, the court does run a deficit, just they don't collect enough fines to pay for all their costs, and that reserve fund's always been able to cover those costs, so no municipality has ever had to pay for those services. One unfortunate thing is, with the move, we are being billed for all the shared space that the court will be operating, so that includes bathrooms, hallways, anything that the Oconomok Police Department's building in to that facility that would be shared with the court. And due to that, our square footage has gone up, and our rent will obviously increase because of that, from about $2,100 to about $4,000 a month for the court. So, we're hopeful that the court continues to grow, and that it continues to operate through citation revenue. And in the short term, if that's not the case, we will have a reserve fund to cover that, and go from there.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions on that? I know that sometimes this is one that there's a lot of questions on. Okay, and if I'm not mistaken, we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item that we have on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1231, 2019-02, adopting the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan.
See, guys, of all, the last couple of meetings, we approved the comprehensive, our comp plan. This is just the rec portion of it. That went through everything. That plan as well is out online. It's just the final, this is the final approval, approving that. And we send these off to the state, we send copies of the comp plan to all, a bunch of municipalities, school districts, everything of that nature, so this is just our final approval of the court plan, the recreation side of things.
I'll make a motion to adopt the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item that we have on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve increases to the park shelter reservation fees, field rental and prep fees, and fine arts center fees.
As I wrote in memo that I gave, it was asked of us to look at fees, and they had not been reviewed or changed in several years, so we also thought it was appropriate to take a look at them. We did. We looked at other communities, compared them, and we were low on quite a few of them. So, the park board came up with the recommended changes, and that's what you have in front of you. And those will take effect the first.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
And it's not all about fees. Can I ask things that aren't just about the fees that are in this?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
If it relates to, now, if it, I mean, the most, the item is fees, so if it has to do with like how long they can rent it and stuff like that...
It's got to do with some items that are actually in the limit use of facilities and the amenities.
Okay. You can ask it if it...
Well, let's start with one fee. We're charging a service fee of $25 for insufficient fund return, and I talked to a few banks today, because I thought that was extremely low, and I did find out that the average cost is $30. One was 25, one was 30, one was 36. I just thought that was kind of low. Is there a reason we have it at 25?
That's what it was, to be honest with you. That doesn't mean we couldn't change it.
Okay.
I don't know what our banks charge.
Our bank, it's $30 if it's...
They don't pay us, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I had a meeting with them today, and I discussed some of that. And the other issues are not about the, oh, the other thing is the cost per prep charge. That didn't get changed, and that should be changed?
Cost per prep?
The $13.20 on...
And there's a reason for that? That's for small fields, that's for T-ball fields, and we only prep those once a week.
But in the park board notes, what does it have? In the park board notes, it has, would that be this one, the 15? It has $15.
Okay. DeeDee, there was a revised sheet, right? With the revised prices?
That's the one she's looking at. That's, that one just didn't get changed for some reason.
Okay. We can make that change.
Okay. And the other questions I'll ask will, at another time, but I'm gonna do it now.
And it's that, just so you know, it's not, it's just in staying with the, staying with the agenda for the, you know...
The other thing that I would note is that we did a study of our actual costs, and the board, the park board increased it a little bit, but basically, this is just to keep up with what it's costing us to prep. We're not making money on that.
Anybody else have any comments, or any discussion on what's been referred from the park board?
So, just clarifying, it's actually gonna be $15 per prep for Juliette, Hartbrook large and small, Centennial, Pembroke, and Nixon T-ball. I just want to clarify.
Just Juliette and Hartbrook.
Just for the T-ball fields?
Just for the T-ball.
Okay, we might want to rework the sec, yeah, because you, including Juliette, Hartbrook large and small, Centennial, Pembroke, Nixon, and T-ball as 15, and then you move down to Bark River, and then Nixon. So, we might just want to add another grid line that pulls out what the park board notes are. Yeah, stating, that's what I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Makes sense, though.
So, we can get that form reworked by the first?
Yeah, it would just be adding that one.
I would just say, had the motion be to be the language of the park board minutes, and we can update it from there.
Okay. And I think that the biggest thing that we need to touch on is the, I think what's, and those are good catches. I think we gotta hit the fees, and then, as a board, I think we're directing you guys to get the forms as, so that they're not confusing. As easy to read as possible.
That's a fee, though. I mean, so I get why she brought that up.
Okay, so you guys, it'll have to be tomorrow, so you guys get that. Oh, no, but I'm saying the fee amount, if we get that, then we can get them to, then we can change forms as they go.
We'll have to remember April 1st to change the sales tax, too, because it goes from 5.1 to 5.
Okay. The stadium.
Nice job.
I would entertain a motion on the fees.
I'll make a motion to increase the park shelter reservation fees, field rental and prep fees, and fine arts center fees, as stated in the park board minutes.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the park shelter reservation fee increase, the field rental and prep fees increase, and the fine arts center fees increase, as stated in the park board minutes, in which they referred that information to us. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much. The next item we have is consideration of a motion to appoint election inspectors with terms to expire December 31, 2021. Be it discussion or a motion, due to the amount of names on the list, I would entertain a motion that simply states the names that have been approved, that are on, they're the names that are on the list that's in the packet. There's quite a few of them, as you know, we have a big election coming up this coming next November. There are Democratic, Democrat Party and Republican Party officials that have been put in for oversight. Those have been listed specifically on who they are.
You'll see some from Delafield, that was, that's, per Darlene, they can do that, and they just, that's where they appointed them from, because apparently, they couldn't find others in Heartland.
Do we run a check on the people that are on this list? Like, everyone, there's no big issues or background for people that are gonna be on?
Probably upon hiring.
Okay.
But I don't, we haven't, I don't, now that I'm aware of.
Should we not do that? Should we maybe do that every...
I'll talk with Darlene. We can look into that.
I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint the election inspectors with terms to expire December 31, 2021.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding the list? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have on our agenda is consideration of a motion to approve the Heartland Business Improvement District 2020 Operating Plan and Budget. If I'm not mistaken, the bid's current president is present here at this meeting.
Two more, one more, Dee. Any questions?
I do have a question. On the sandwich board grant, it says up to $50. And I seem to recall, years ago, I believe it was actually before Jeff was here, we made a, we took a vote, and we had all signs were gonna be white with black lettering, correct? And wasn't each business at their request to the bid going to get a free sign? A one-time free sign?
There is a, whatever you call, I mean, I don't think it's white, it's black with black trim, or possibly white trim, but it's a black board.
Okay, I knew it was one color board, one color lettering, and that was, they wanted it standard throughout the village.
The lettering was not standard, because people, the main thing was it was gonna be it's a black board. At one point, we had all different sizes and everything else. There's a uniform size now, and I believe they can, it's a black board, that's for sure. They can use colored chalk, or whatever type of chalk they want, but I believe it's gotta be a black trim, for sure, or, and/or white trim. But it's, what really happened, what we did with ours is to get it to a standard size. We didn't want these big signs around, we didn't want the little signs, and that, that's pretty much what it was.
I seem to remember, we got very specific on it for some reason. I don't, I don't remember.
No, I remember that.
I'd have to go through the notes and look, but...
It had to be erasable, and we had no problem with the colors or anything like that. The main thing was the size of it.
And then, they had to be taken in at night, and they couldn't be on the sidewalk.
That is something that was addressed at the last meeting, I think, that we were gonna talk to some of the business owners to address that and say, yes, they need to be taken in at night.
Right, and I know we had problems with one that put them in the right-of-way of the sidewalk, separate way to say that.
Well, and that's a good point. When it comes to the sidewalk, that's definitely enforceable, or should be enforceable. When it's on a private part, we have some that are on private property.
Right.
Because they've got their own parking lot, and that, we really can't dictate that they bring those in. It's up to them on something like that. So, the key thing with the size and the colors was more, well, the size more, anything else was the sidewalk situation, because, boy, we had, we had all different sized boards going on.
So, there's more of a chalkboard-type deal?
It's a chalkboard, yeah.
Okay, but then, does each business get a one-time free board, or do they, does everybody...
No, they, for some reason, their board would become damaged, or they wanted to replace it, we'll give them another $50 toward that. It really, there's a fee, I think, isn't there, for the sandwich board?
Sign grants. Yeah, sign permit.
Yeah, and part of that 50 is to cover the signed grant more than anything else. Because the boards themselves are about $75, I think.
Wow, okay.
You know, we've, I think we give them a couple different names of people, or we give them the dimension size that we're looking for, and they can order them.
Okay, so it's nothing we keep in stock anywhere, like a DPW or anything?
No reason to.
Okay. I didn't know that they were...
There's enough around, but there's not that many signs around. I'd say we got maybe, I see a half dozen within the bid district.
I think that was the first question I had.
Anybody else have anything on the operating plan, bid operating plan for 2020?
No, so I'll make the motion to approve the Heartland Bid Improvement District operating plan for 2020.
And budget.
And budget.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the operating plan and budget for 2020 for the Business Improvement District. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Our next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to confirm appointments, confirm appointment of Tom Brass, Marilyn Heraldson, and John Wojcikowski to the Downtown Business Improvement District Board for the terms ending December 31, 2022.
I'll make the motion to confirm the appointments of the names as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those three people to the Business Improvement Board with terms expiring December 31, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. At this time, we have announcements. I will just say that serving with this board for the year has been absolute pleasure. I'm proud of each and every one of us, and I think as we come to the end of the year, I just want to announce that I think that the board is doing a fantastic job for the village of Heartland. I think everybody puts their work in, and I think what we see around us, you know, is a, that's the reward of seeing people care. That's, I just wanted to make sure to get that out, but I'm honored to serve with each and every one of you, and I think that the village of Heartland is getting better and better. What you've seen happen in the last couple of years here in Heartland doesn't happen very often in communities, but I think that it's going well.
I'd also like to thank Ryan for stepping in and taking over, and doing such a fabulous job.
Thank you, obviously.
Thanks, Ryan.
All because of the department heads, everybody kind of runs the show.
It was awesome, thank you. It was wonderful working with you.
Thank you. On that note, we have a new administrator at the next meeting.
Yes, we do.
Tim Rhodey, he'll be starting one week from today.
So, does that mean you're gonna be sitting here now?
I'll be way back there.
At a camera site.
I think we're changing that, aren't we?
At some point.
Anybody else have any announcements? Anybody have announcements? Chief? DPW? All right, well, with that...
Tom has, Tom has something.
You gotta go to the podium, so that they can pick it up.
I'll just go ahead and thank Ryan for when he came in at a difficult time, and that brought him in onto the bid board, and he was really helpful, and brought a lot of things to our attention that weren't being done, put me in my place a couple times.
Yes, we did.
But it was the right thing, and you did a great job stepping into that, and, well, I'm glad you're staying with the village.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. All right. So, if we have no other announcements, then at this time, this will be a roll call vote, but we will, we have a consideration of a motion to recess to closed session pursuant to State Statutes 19.85, Section 1C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding the interim village administrator performance evaluation. What's the motion to make?
Trustee Anson?
Well, no, we got a motion, we need a motion first.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, may I have a roll call? Vote, please.
Trustee Anson?
Aye.
Trustee Durrell? Aye. Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Phil Wolf Fannerstall?
Yes.
Trustee Walshlager?
Yes.
And Trustee Ledkay?
Yes.
Yes. All right, that passes, so we will move into closed session. We will be coming back into open session to adjourn this meeting, and before adjourning, if there's any business to take care of, the board will take care of that regarding the review of the interim administrator slash director of finance.
We're on Ben.
Okay.
All right, so we are back in open session from closed session on where we reviewed the year in review for the interim administrator, Ryan Bailey, and finance director for the beginning part of the year. For the last three quarters of the year, he was both. So at this time, if anybody would like to make a motion regarding any increase, decrease, or stay the same on his pay, now would be the time that we can do that.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to increase Ryan's wages by 6%, as well as include a two-month stipend that will take place through the end of February during the transition. I'm sure you're going to be getting a lot of questions, and I know you're aware of that, but it could be more than you might expect. So we feel it's kind of rewarding to have you have that stipend and stay in place for another couple of months until the transition is complete.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to increase the interim administrator, to increase Ryan Bailey's pay 6%, and that the stipend of $500 per pay period every two weeks stays in place until the last paycheck in February. It's been moved and seconded. I just want to say that will be, this is very simple, that that's off of gross. It's not however they say gross it up or tax it up. It's 6% from the gross up. I didn't run the, I think my math is a little bit off, so I won't. I have for 6%, I have 92,319.64.
No.
What's the, what do I have currently?
870...
87094.59.
I had 92,320.70.
Say it again.
92,320.70.
That's what I have.
So the pay...
I've got it in the...
Okay, so just so that everybody's on the same, I mean, the motion was for 6%, that's the exact same as your gross pay will be 92,320 and 70 cents. And that stipend will go on so that last, it goes through, yeah. It doesn't continue into March, but that last, it carries you through that February. So while you're getting pulled in a lot of directions and trying to get...
I appreciate it.
...on board and that kind of thing, that you're getting compensated for that. So does anybody else have anything they'd like to add? I do want to say again, I'm very proud of this board. If I'm not mistaken, this is the first time that we've done it, I mean, this open a forum for our community and... I'm serious. I'm proud of you guys and myself. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
You're not on vacation yet.
Not yet.
At this time, I'd entertain...
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Wait a second.
Wait, who, hold on. Donna did it?
Donna did it.
Sure.
I got notes.
So you're still doing it?
I'm still writing it all down. Okay, well, I didn't know.
All in favor of adjourning this here last meeting of 2019?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.